This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you for joining the City of Kingston's Common Council at our caucus meeting. Today is Monday, April 6th. My name is Andrea Schott, the council president and the organizer for the virtual meetings. Before we begin our meeting, we would like to go over a few meeting guidelines to help us navigate the system as efficiently and respectfully as possible. We ask that members of the public and press remain muted for the length of the meeting and off camera. As the organizer, I do reserve the right to mute anyone who unmutes themselves. Council members and city staff will control their own mute button. Good practice would be to mute yourself if you are not speaking to avoid background noise and feedback. If a council member or staff wishes to speak, they will raise their hands. The chairperson will call on them before they speak by stating their name clearly for our audio listens. Good practice would be to say your name again, too, for our audio listeners. All of our meetings are recorded. Both video and written transcriptions will be made available to the public on the city's website at a later date. Although we will not have public speaking tonight, you could submit written comments to the City of Kingston Clerk Elisa Tinty at emtinty@kingston.ny.gov or by dropping them off at the Dropbox located outside the side door of City Hall. We also encourage you to reach out to committee chairs or your ward representative at any time. If you have any audio issues, send a text message to the following number, 845-594-6120. Phone calls will not be answered during the meeting. As the organizer for today's meeting, I reserve the right to lock and pause the meeting to eject anyone who has behaved inappropriately. Lastly, at tonight's meeting, we have an attendance majority leader who will be leading the caucus, Rennie Scott Childress. Ward one alderman Jeffrey Ventura Morrell. Ward two alderman Doug Coop. Ward four alderwoman Rita Worthington. Ward five alderman Don Tolloman. Ward six alderman Tony Davis. Ward seven alderman Patrick O'Reilly. Ward eight alderman Steve Shabbat. Missing is alderwoman Michelle Hirsch from Ward nine. Thank you for your patience, especially us being late into caucus as we finish up our special Finance and Laws and Rules meeting. And I now turn the floor over to the Majority Leader, Rennie Scott Childress.
Thank you. Welcome to everybody tonight. I would like for us to diverge from normal practice and take a moment of silence, recognizing the pain, the suffering, the difficulties that people in our community throughout the state, throughout the nation and world have been going through in relation to the COVID-19 crisis. We know people not only who are suffering directly from the disease, but people who are suffering indirectly in all kinds of ways. So if we could please take a moment of silence. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. So we recognize, too, that we're going to be going through some very different economic times than we were expecting even as short as three or four weeks ago. With that in mind, we'll be thinking about the legislation for us tonight. And of course, we want to be flexible and look at any new situations that arise here in the near future. We're fortunate because we have now developed a certain practice, at least, of communicating virtually here. I would like to thank Council President Andrea Schott for all the work that she's put in to trying to figure this out. There are multiple ways of communicating virtually, and it's not easy to figure out which is the good one, which is the best one, and so forth. And I know she's put in a lot of work. So I greatly appreciate all of that effort. And I think that we've all benefited from the relative ease, at least, with which we went through our previous two meetings. So hopefully, we'll get to be really good at this, and we'll be able to visit this rodeo time and again. All right. So does anybody have anything they would like to say before we start here? Nope, everybody's good. Okay. So our first resolution tonight is number 62. This is authorizing the mayor to spend funds for the Environmental Facilities Corporation for the Green Infrastructure Grant Program over at Deed Stadium. This was passed through the Finance Committee. Doug Coop, I don't know if you want to say anything about this one?
Other than there's two grants that cover this cost. There's the grant and the match, which is covered under the next resolution, number 63, but there's no financial impact to the city.
All right. And this is Tony Davis. Tony, you got to unmute yourself.
Unmute, Tony.
I just noticed on the resolution, you didn't vote.
No, five people voted, but the order of the signatures is wacky. Is that what you're saying?
You don't have a yes or no by your name.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Okay. So.
Oh, no. Yeah, okay. I was confused about the boxes.
Yep.
All right. Well, I'll take care of that at my first opportunity then. Thank you for noticing that. Steve Shabbat, unmute yourself, Steve. Steve, unmute yourself. There you go.
How's that? All right, Steve Shabbat. Okay, thank you, sir. Actually, I expressed my opinion at Finance Meeting about this. I think this is a great idea. The amount of complaints about the parking lot at Deed Stadium is second only to the locker rooms and the bathrooms up there. This is really well, we need this to bring in people up there. This is the thing. It's not cost, it's anything. This is a great project.
Thank you for that. Does anybody have any other questions? If any objections before tomorrow night? All right, good. Looks good for that one. So I'm presuming, then, that the next resolution, everybody's also okay with. That's the related resolution. And that one also has no financial impact. Am I okay in assuming that?
Yes.
All right.
Sure.
Resolution 64. This is a budget modification in the 2020 Parks Recreation Budget to increase the revenue and expense lines. Doug, anything you want to say about this one?
This is for three particular projects, one involving the beach, one involved pool, one involving City Hall. And I don't have it in front of me. I forget what the third one is. It's an electric vehicle charging station. But these are all three covered by grants, zero financial impact.
Great. Any questions, concerns, issues with this one?
No.
Being none, this is Rennie again. Let's move on to the next one, then. This one is a budgetary transfer for multiple positional changes. So I see it says in the committee report that there's a positive impact of $2,018.94, but it's not written on the line. So Doug, you want to say anything about this one?
Do you recall this is for the two positions, new positions, that the mayor's requested a project manager for housing initiatives and a director of intergovernmental affairs?
All right. Doug, I mean, I'm sorry, Steve, remember to unmute yourself, Steve.
Thank you. Yeah, at the last meeting, I expressed some concerns. I also expressed the fact that this was going to be done with available funds. I think when this started, I somehow had the idea this was going to be done through grants, but then we learned at the meeting, this was going to be accomplished through two positions we have not filled. I'm really not in favor of these positions. If we have excess money like that, I would certainly favor putting them to use, possibly with the police or fire department. I'm really not in favor of these two positions at City Hall.
So you're saying that you would vote against this particular resolution?
I would.
All right. Other feelings about it? Jeffrey?
I agree with Steve. I think one position, the housing specialist, might be a necessary position. The other one, the mayor wasn't planning on filling until the end of the year anyway. So I would be in favor of voting for one, but not the other, if they could be separated somehow.
This is Rennie. As I understand it, the housing position already has money in the budget for it in the sense that it's an unfilled position. So if one votes against this particular piece, it's, in a sense, asking to put off the second position, which was the intergovernmental liaison position. Any comments about that? Tony Davis?
Again, as Jeffrey, I'd like to ensure that was explained to us at Finance why these two, why these could be two separate resolutions, which would make it, you know, people would have the opportunity to vote on one or the other, or both, or neither. But when they're put together, it makes it a little bit more difficult. And somebody might say that one position is needed, but the other one is that now the money's all grouped together. So I'm not sure if that's something that could be discussed before tomorrow, if breaking it out or not, that, you know, I'd be more in favor of it as well if it was separated.
Andrea Schott?
Yeah, this is Andrea Schott. I agree with what Alderman Davis just said. And, you know, the other thing is, yeah, this money might be budgeted right now, but especially entering into such a financial, or we don't know if we're entering into a financial crisis, but what is going to happen? And these funds can actually go back into contingency or fund balance or something to something that we might need. You know, we don't know how long this crisis is going to last. And to spend money, especially when you have two positions that are linked together, and one, I think, a number of us view as more essential than the other position, I think it's a little irresponsible to move forward with that, I believe, right now. And we just don't know what everything is going to look like. My two cents. Thank you.
Patrick O'Reilly?
It's a time for us to be financially responsible. Two hirings like this probably shouldn't happen anytime soon. That's my two cents.
All right, we're up to four cents. Doug?
Yeah, I will, again, this was a request made by the mayor. As I've said on a number of occasions, I'm supportive of what he's doing. He's operating within the budget. He's moving things around. He's moving money from one pocket to another, like, which is a pretty normal thing. We all do that. Businesses do that all the time. He's managing his staff, and he's doing it within the resources that we've allocated to him. I'm in favor of letting him go forward and do this. So I would be supportive of this.
Rennie Scott Childress again. I hear, oh, go ahead, Rita.
Rita, unmute yourself first. Okay, sorry. I'm in agreement with everyone who said that these two positions should be separated because I am in favor of the housing manager position. Given what's happening now, that's even going to be more important when all of this is over. And so if we could separate, somehow separate those two positions, I would be in favor for the housing. However, I would not be in favor of the intergovernmental department position.
All right, this is Rennie. So I hear two things. One is a desire to separate the two positions and, in a sense, have two pieces of legislation, one that would clearly articulate the housing position and another that would clearly articulate the intergovernmental liaison position. And I guess the other thing I'm hearing is lack of interest in approving this particular request for $2,000 from several people. So I suppose we've got two ways to go, then. One would be to vote this down on the floor and tell the mayor to redo it, or ask the mayor, rather, to redo it. Another one would be to send it back to committee, I guess, which, in effect, would have the same result. What do people think? Tony Davis, then, Don?
Again, if you want to have the opportunity to speak to the mayor and let him know what the feedback has been today, and have him have the opportunity to come back, and if he wants to have them separated, and if he can do that before tomorrow, that'd be great. And then we could vote on it on the floor, or we would have to amend it or something, right, on the floor? Or if he can't do that, then if we can't do that, then it would have to, you know, my suggestion would be to send it back to committee.
Right, Don?
I agree with that. We don't want to delay it another month. It's going to take time to find and recruit someone to do the housing job. For the record, I'm in favor of the other administrative job that he's requesting. But, you know, I think that makes sense to split them into two different pieces.
I'm sorry, it does make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Rita, did you want to say something?
Just that, I agree.
Okay. So then the issue is whether or not, well, my understanding is that this particular amount of money is for that second position, right? So even if we don't act on this tonight, the mayor can still, under his own authority, establish the other position because this is not creating, it's not articulating the housing position. Do other people read this the same way? Tony, then Jeffrey?
I understand that. So you're saying he could still, which position are you referring to?
Well, his timeline was to create the housing position as soon as possible.
Correct.
Then create the intergovernmental liaison position later in the year. And so my understanding is that this $2,000 was for that other position to add to monies that are in the budget, but that don't come up to the salary required. Jeffrey?
Yes, that was my understanding, too. I was there, sorry, this is Jeffrey Ventura Morrell. I was there at the Finance Meeting, and from what I understood, this is basically changing the title of a position within the Economic Development Office that already was budgeted for the housing position. And then the rest of that money that was already allocated would have been reallocated to the second position. So even if we vote this down, the mayor would still be able to move forward with the housing position. It would just require a budget transfer.
So I think probably the option to follow would be to table it tomorrow, or not table it, but send it back to committee tomorrow night and have the mayor articulate this as money for that specific second position. Andrea Schott?
It can be voted down, and then you could suspend the rules tomorrow and motion for the other position.
Well, this is Rennie. I don't, my, we don't have any actual legislation that's talking about the two positions, right? So are you saying that we would create that position on the floor tomorrow night?
I think we would be allocating the money, this is Andrea Schott again, allocating the money for the one position, the director.
Right. Well, but my understanding is that the money is already there for the housing director, the money and the, in a sense, of the position, that this money is actually for the other one, because there's nothing in this piece of legislation that says specifically what it's for. It just says for the creation of two new positions. It doesn't articulate them. And in his explanation to us, Jeffrey and I, at least, what we understood him to be saying was that there was a bit of a shortfall for the second position. Although I guess, no, I see there is a budget transfer.
I'm trying to pull it up, sorry.
Yeah. So I don't know, I think that...
Rennie, I think that, this is Andrea Schott again, I mean, there's so many, this is unclear. I would suggest that this, you consider sending this back to committee and, you know, getting this the way you want it before moving forward.
I'm good with that. What do other people think? We get two thumbs. Any other thumbs? Andrea, I mean, sorry, Rita?
I'm good with that as well, but I also was in the Finance Committee meeting when the mayor came in and spoke about this. And it's my understanding, as well, that the housing position, the money was already there for that. He was asking for additional funds because there would be a shortfall for this second position. So I'm clear on what these positions are. So as far as sending it back to committee, to get clarity, if we're going to send it back to committee, it would be to separate the two positions, you know, not, we already, you know, not to, for him to tell us what these positions are for.
Okay. Patrick?
We don't know what our financial situation is going to be in a month from now. I think we should just put a hold on these positions, tell the mayor, he's an excellent manager. This man has proven that he's an excellent manager. He can use the resources that he has already in place and take care of the, these two positions that way. This is not something that needs to be immediately done. He has a lot of good staff up there, and I'm sure he can handle this right now. And we can keep our financial situation status quo for the meantime, until we know what's going on. Thank you.
Okay. Andrea, did you have something else to say?
No.
All right. So, yes, Doug Coop?
Yeah, I would just reiterate again, I hear you, Patrick. The resources are already there. They're in the present budget. And so I would opt not to, again, I would support going forward on this, and I would oppose sending it back to committee. Thank you.
Any other comments? So then, here are our choices. Let me know what you prefer. One is, we send it, we vote on it tomorrow night, we voted yes. I have only heard one person in support of that position. The other possibilities we've discussed are sending it back to committee and then discussing with the mayor to articulate this more clearly in terms of that second position, or vote it down tomorrow night. Tony Davis?
It seems like the mayor wants, he's projected its theory on his resolution to start May 1st as director of housing.
Right. And my understanding, and I think that of other people who were there, is that he can do that with the housing position. We don't necessarily, we don't have to vote for that. This is all, the monies here are for the second position. So, yes, Andrea Schott?
And I'm hearing more people against the second position, the intergovernmental affairs, especially right now. I mean, you know, people say that it's a good, you know, the budget is good and he's a good manager, but we are looking at a financial crisis that we don't know. We don't know how long we're going to be here, so everything looked great a month ago, but we have no idea what it's going to look like. And if the mayor go on with the housing director job without us voting this in, and that's what we all want anyway, so this is really about the intergovernmental affairs position, then that's what we're really voting on, is that position that I'm hearing more people, or you guys are voting on, I'm hearing more council members against the second position and not necessarily against the first, that we could have the mayor move forward with the housing position. I mean, he said he could keep doing it. We send this back to committee, and then we could discuss it in intergovernmental affairs, plus the name of that, because I get tongue-tied on it every time. And, you know, in a month, two months, when we have a better understanding and we have more data on what we're going to be looking at financially, because we can't say that we're in good standing right now because we don't know. We say we're in a dire situation because we don't know. We don't know what a month is going to look like here. So, I mean, it's up to you guys, of course. You know, that's what I'm thinking. If the mayor could just do the housing, have him do the housing and move this back to committee, and we could talk about the second position when we know more about our financial standings.
Tony Davis?
That is what I'm in favor of. So that is the way I will be voting for it, if it comes, if it still comes up, that we send it back.
Send it back to committee. Steve Shabbat?
Yeah, same.
Jeffrey, where are you?
I'd like to send it back.
Okay. Jeffrey? Send it back. Rita? Send it back. Patrick?
I'd like to send it back, but, you know, any, we're all trying to conserve everything, money, food, everything. We're, and now the mayor's going to start hiring people? Why aren't we conserving our money on the city? When everybody's conserving everything at their home right now, trying to do the best, and now we're saying, hire people? I understand that we're not going to have summer camp this summer. We have people in the rec department, as we've all said, highly skilled people in rec department that have less to do now. There's other people in the city that have less to do now than they did before because they can't go to work. I don't know, hiring people right now, bad idea. Shouldn't be spending the money like this. Go back to committee. Thank you.
Okay, back to committee. Don?
Unmute yourself, Don.
Send it back to committee.
Okay. So Doug, you're still going to vote for?
I'll think about it. Presently, I'm inclined to vote for.
Okay. Who will take the initiative tomorrow night, then, to propose sending it back to committee? Steve? Great, thank you. And, great, Rita, you can second it? Okay.
Yes.
Great. Good. All right, then we can move on now. Sorry, I'm scrolling through. All right, resolution 66. This is a budget transfer in the assessor's office.
Total amount is $1,645. Several pieces to this, all small stuff. I would be supportive of this.
And, but it's zero financial impact in the end, right?
Right, zero, right.
Okay. Any other questions? Steve's okay with it? Everybody else okay with this, then? All right. Resolution 60- All right, Resolution 67. Authorizing funds and bonding in the amount of $800,000 for the mayor to accept a public trail easement and negotiate and execute an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Ulster. This is relating to the Hudson River Brickyard Trail. And, Doug, what do you want to say about this one?
Yeah, this is a total project cost of $1,704,000, $240,000. Multiple funding sources, of which the city, financial impact of the city is $316,098. And in order to get the project going, we considered bonding of $800,000. So there's really three resolutions involved here. One is for the project itself, which commits the city to $316,098. And I think we've discussed this at committee, I think it had widespread support to do this. It's something we want to do, but that's the commitment we would have. The, the other two resolutions to follow, 68 and 69, authorization to bond, and then a bond resolution of $800,000.
Okay, Steve Shabbitt?
Yeah, as I said before, this, this is something we've been working on and for a community that really depends on tourist dollars, a great deal. I think this is a project that's going to bring in a lot of people to the area, which is going to relate to revenue for our area. It's going to make downtown look better. And again, I think it's going to bring a lot of people and I think the whole city will reap the rewards of it. I'm in favor of it.
Okay, other folks? Jeffrey's been good with it. Patrick, you want to say something? Unmute yourself.
Is there an urgency for this?
Steve?
I don't know how urgent it is. I'm not sure whether the funding sources or have dates on them. Now, I don't, I don't know that, it would be nice to have this for the summer months. I don't know if we're going to get that far on it anyway. I don't know, I mean, there is, there's only urgency as far as, I think it's a valuable source of revenue for our community. That's the urgency as far as I'm concerned.
Jeffrey? Then Tony?
Also, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure if I recall this correctly, but I think Kristen said there might be possible grants to cover our costs.
We have John, sorry, this is Andrea, but we have John and Schultze and Kristen Wilson here too. They might have something to add to this.
Oh, there's John, go ahead, John, then Tony.
Hey, can you guys, can you guys hear me? Okay.
This is John Schultze, our city engineer for folks listening.
So to answer the question about the timing, the, the main funding source, the biggest funding source for this is a Department of State grant, which does have an expiration date in March of 2021, by which time we were supposed to have constructed the, constructed the trail and expended all of those grant funds. And that grant will expire if we fail to do that. So it is, as we read that grant agreement as it sits right now, it isn't, it would be important to construct this, this year and expend those funds so that that grant does not expire. The grant has been extended, that time has been extended in the past. In fact, that grant goes back, I want to say to 2012. And it has been extended before, but to get this last extension, the mayor had to really beg and plead at the, up to the level of the governor's office to get that extension. So, and we've been told that no further extensions are likely to be granted.
Plus, this will be a bond, right? So it's not like we're spending this money right up front, we'd be spending it along for pretty long future. Yes, okay, Tony then?
Well, John answered the question because I didn't know, you know, my question was going to be, did this have to be done by a certain time? What was, what was the urgency on this? So John answered that question, thank you.
Okay, great, Patrick O'Reilly?
Hi, John, you said it was, you have up to a year from today, today?
I believe it, it's March 31st of 2021 and that's, by that time, we're supposed to, to, to meet the terms of the grant agreement, we would have to construct the trail and expend the funds by that date.
So John, obviously, we're in a, you know, we're all in a situation here, the city, its residents. Do you think we could come back and revisit this next month? Would that be a problem?
It looks like Kristen might want to jump in here, Kristen Wilson from our grants, our grants manager.
I'll give my thoughts real quickly, is that the, the engineering plans for this are nearly complete. We would see ourselves bidding it, putting it out for a public bid within a matter of weeks from now. So we could be in a position to award it in roughly six to eight weeks from now. And, I mean, a four week delay, to see if Kristen can think of anything, I'm not thinking. I mean, if we're, if a one month delay probably doesn't, doesn't impact that schedule that I just described.
Thank you.
Kristen Wilson, then Steve Shabbitt?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I sort of differ with John. I do think a month, one month delay could delay the project. And we were already really working on a skinny timeline or a, you know, a very quick timeline to get this project done in time for the March deadline and in time before the, the paving plants or the asphalt plants close in November. So I am a little bit concerned about the schedule. Also, I just wanted to mention that the, the grants would be paying for about $850,000 of the project. And the request, I think, was for $317,000 in bonding. And the rest would be covered by in kind and donated services from Cenit Hudson and Hudson River Ground Valley Greenway. So our portion of the entire project cost is, is, you know, not as much as it could be if we were, had to match the grant entirely with cash. I also just wanted to mention that I think this project is actually pretty important during this time. I mean, I've been going out on the Kingston Point rail trail pretty regularly with my daughter and I, out towards the Kingston Point on the Causeway, and I have never seen so many people use it as people are doing now. I think that this kind of space is one of the only places that a lot of people can safely be and recreate during this sort of pandemic time. And if we get this built, you know, it would be another space that people could be.
Plus, this is something that would be putting people to work. We would be getting money back into the economy and that's the sort of thing that we really need to be doing, is providing the possibility for people to get out there and be working as soon as possible. And construction is something that has been allowed to a certain extent throughout this crisis. Steve Shabbitt?
Yeah, I, Pat, I, I don't see any benefit whatsoever to delaying this a month. I haven't heard anybody object to the project another month. I don't think it's going to change anybody's mind. Everybody seems in favor of it. I've said it before, I'm going to echo what Kristen just said. Our rail trails are jam packed, 12 months a year. That means people coming here, it means people spending money, it means some jobs. I just, I can't even imagine what putting this off a month is going to accomplish. Nobody here has said they don't like the idea. I think the idea is great. And again, it's, it's, it's going to bring jobs, it's going to bring revenue to the area. And, you know, one month I don't see as any kind of deal breaker here.
Andrea Shaw? Then Kristen Wilson?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I'm actually one of those people that uses the rail trail pretty much daily during this shutdown here. Do we know, does anybody here know if, because I know some construction workers are considered essential and some have been deemed non-essential? But, Kristen, do you know if these, these construction workers would be considered essential? I mean, would we be able to actually get this work done if we're shut down for a while?
John may have a different opinion, I was, that's actually why I was raising my hand, but other Empire State Trail projects, for example, the Ahep project, which is on the other side of Hoover, have continued to be constructed during this time. I think they're, they are considered transportation. That, that's my opinion. John, I don't know if you have more to say about that, John Schultze?
Yeah, we've, we've seen the other parts of the Empire State Trail deemed as, you know, transportation infrastructure. And this, this trail is, is part of the Empire State Trail as well. And, and back to the idea of delaying this four weeks, you know, I think relative, you know, there's, there's multiple aspects to what we're, what you guys are looking at. Part of it is an authorization for the mayor to accept the easement and to enter and to negotiate the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Ulster. I'd, I'd really like to not delay those parts of it. If we, if we, if you want to go forward with the project, let's not delay that because we still need to have the mayor approach the town and probably get on to one of their agendas for them to give their town supervisor the authorization and authorization to expend their share of the funds as well from the town. So given that that coordination with the town needs to occur, I do recommend, if we're going to do this, to, to act on it tonight.
All right, I think it's a good idea to go forward. Do I get a sense everybody else is pretty much okay with that, some good reservation? Okay, so we're good to go with this one then? All right, okay, let's move on to Resolution number 70. Thank you, John and Kristen, we appreciate your help there. Resolution 70, this is about procuring $524,000 for the zoning consultant. A number of us have had some questions about this one. So what do people think? Doug?
Send it back, it's not the time to do this.
Okay, send it back.
Just from a financial standpoint, it's not the time to do it, it's a lot of money. And also, I've got a number of calls questioning the, the, whether this is a good thing to do. But just on the financial standpoint, send it back.
Jeffrey, then Steve?
I think it's a, this is a great initiative and I'm, I'm the liaison for this, for the zoning task force. I, I agree with Doug, I think we should send it back and reconsider, given the times we're living in now. So I would be in favor of sending it back.
Okay, Steve Shabbitt?
Yeah, I, I agree with that. Tony Argylevitz presented a pretty good argument for why we need this, but this is probably not an ideal time to be moving something like this forward. I don't think time is going to affect anything about this. So, yeah, I'd be in favor of sending it back too.
Okay, Tony?
Ditto.
All right, I think we've got a general motion towards sending it back to committee then? Patrick?
I like what people are saying, they're being cautious in this, in this dangerous time we live, thank you very much.
Okay, great, all right. So who will make the motion to send this back to committee? Jeffrey, you want to do it? Okay, good, and who can second it? Tony will, thank you, sir. All right, we've got number 71 then, I think. Whoops, where'd it go? There it is. This is another budgetary transfer, $165,000 to pay for the removal or replacement of the canopy at 4345 North Front Street. Doug, do you want to say anything about this one from the financial?
Yeah, this, it's 165, like you said, it's $165,000 from the 2020. You know, this is a big, big liability that's standing there. You know, I think we got to move on with this.
Yeah, anybody else? Tony?
Yes, as Doug said, this has been going on for a while and, you know, it, it has to be replaced. You know, it has to be done and to hold off on this and hold off on this can be, you know, put the city in more liability. So this is, this is the one that, you know, we have to go forward. I understand what Alderman O'Reilly's doing, you know, at this time, you know, again, the, the life where we're at right now and financially, we don't know how it's going to work. So I can see why Patrick is, you know, what are things that are important or things that can be put off in this financial, you know, crisis that we have right now? This is one thing that I can't see us putting off because it's been put off for a while and we need to make sure we get that state-wise canopy.
Great, Steve Shabbitt, then Andrea Shaw, whoops, sorry.
Yeah, I really think we have to get this done. Not a good time to be spending money, yes, that's, that's true, but we've been talking about this for a long time, it's a liability there and now businesses are struggling, you know, we're going to do something to help some businesses, I think. You know, this is, you know, this is well past the point of, you know, being, you know, it's moved on from just being a thought to, let's get this done. You know, I, I really think it's essential that we have this done.
Andrea Shaw?
Yeah, I was just going to kind of concur with saying, I mean, I know we want to be careful with our, our spending and it's not even just that we just want to get this done because it's been a while, this is public safety. We don't want anybody getting hurt, is, you know, that's why I think spending the money is, is worth it, for public safety.
And if I remember correctly, this money actually is from the settlement. So in essence, it's not taxpayer money, it was, it was for this purpose. Patrick and then Doug? Patrick?
I think he's frozen.
Oh no.
All right, I'll jump in, you're right, there was, we did have a recovery of something like $350,000 from the, the lawsuit that went on a couple of years ago. Kevin could give you a lot of those details better than I could, but, you know, we have, basically have that money for which we can draw this $165,000.
Great, so everybody who's not frozen, others, Patrick, are you back?
Yeah, he's, he's back.
What do you want to say?
Says your network connection has been reestablished. Oh, this is safety, I think I said this is a safety issue that needs to be taken care of in my last, my last statement.
Okay, good, I think we're all in agreement on this one then?
Yes.
Resolution then 81. Budgetary transfer, $20,000, Pine Street African Burial Ground awarded as part of the 2019 participatory budget project. Doug Coop, do you want to say anything about this one?
Well, this is, this $20,000, which is, which is coming, is coming from the contingency for the African burial ground, the project, the youth design project, African burial ground. You know, the, the allocation for the three districts of the city. This is $20,000. This is $20,000 for Midtown that would go to the African burial ground. And it's budgeted to come from the contingency.
It was already budgeted?
Yeah.
Okay. Any comments about this? Tony Davis?
So this is money that we got in from the, the three businesses, correct? And this is, that, yeah, that we got from there and it's just come back. Okay, thank you.
All right. So everybody's good with that one? Patrick?
Patrick, did you want to say something? Yeah, again, anyway, we can put this off for next month. Not that I'm saying we don't do it. I'm just saying can we put it off for next month? See what our situation is. Financially. Wish Don Dewey was here.
Rita?
Rita, unmute yourself first. I keep doing that. Rita speaking. It seems to me that no immediate work is going to start on this anyway, right? We're just, the money is already there for this. So you put it off till next month. I don't, I just don't see the purpose of putting it off. You know?
You mean because the money has already been allocated?
The money has already been allocated for it. You know, we're not, we're not spending any new money. And I understand the financial, should we need it for some, but if it's been allocated for that specific thing, it's not like we would be taking, should we need extra money or we fall into some kind of crisis, we're not going to be taking that money to use for anything. Am I correct with that? Because it has been allocated toward that.
Tony Davis?
That's what I would assume. I mean, I wish John was here to answer that, but that's what I'm underneath the understanding that it's been allocated for that particular, the community chose that particular project for that, for those funds. And we wouldn't be able to use that funds for something else. I mean, it's allocated particularly for that particular project.
Doug Coop?
Doug Coop, it's in a sense, it's already been allocated into, into the contingency. We know we're, the contingency is built knowing that we're going to spend 20,000 in that district and 20,000 in two other districts of the city.
All right. So these are things too, that would be putting money directly back into the community. Right? This is, in a sense, the city putting money right back into the community here. Patrick?
I agree with that. I just think we need to, right now, the things we should really be deciding on are the emergency situations like the last one. Where the roof was falling in, we need to pay for a new roof. I get it. We got to do that. Other things that are not an emergency right now, in an emergency situation, we shouldn't be thinking this way. We should be thinking like, this may get worse before it gets better. And do we have the resources to, to get through this as a city? That's what I'm thinking. I don't know what you're thinking.
Well, in this particular case, my, my, my feeling is that because this is money that would go into salaries, would go into work that's being done right here in Kingston. This is the sort of thing that meets precisely the kind of needs that we have right now. We've got a lot of people out of work. We've got a lot of people who are having difficulty making their rent. So anything we can do to get money into our local economy is a good thing to do, and that's exactly where this would be going. Don?
It's also a little bit of good news, you know, helped lift some spirits.
Uh huh. Tony?
Again, I echo what I said before, Patrick. I, Patrick, I understand where you're coming from, but as I just, we, we state, this money is allocated for that particular project. So regardless of we take it now or take it later, it's that 20,000 earmarked for this particular project is nothing we can't do, do it. That money's in our budget for the African America burial ground project. So it's there for them. And so regardless, we give it to them now, give it to them later, the money's still there for that particular project. So it's not, like I said, again, it was awarded to, that community awarded that to that particular project and we couldn't take that 20,000 and do something else with it. That would be, we couldn't, we can't do that legally, I don't think.
Baton Switch, Andrea Shaw?
That, that was my, going to be my point is I don't think we, we, we can't. The, the, this is the participatory budget vote that the people voted to set, put these, this $20,000 aside for this project. So this is above us, above our, our pay grade here is this is, this is the people voting to spend the $20,000 on it. We're just having, we just do the transfer into this. This isn't, it's kind of not up to us. The people voted, people spoke.
Steve Shabbat?
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I was going to say, I think somebody brought it up and wasn't, isn't this our first participatory budget? So, you know, it would be nice to follow through on, on that. As, as Don said, this is, this is really going to go a long way. You know, we do need some, some good things going on in the community, some positive. We're going to be hiring some people. I mean, I really think the, you know, the positives outweigh the negatives on this.
Good. Rita? Then Doug?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, make a comment about the, the Pine Street African burial ground. If you have not been over there yet and, you know, taking a look at what's going on already over there as well as gone to some of the meetings of the young people that's actually designing this project, I think you would have a different feeling of why we should go ahead and, and transfer this money and let them go ahead and get this project started.
Anybody else? Doug?
Yeah, I, I agree with Rita. I've been there. I've seen what's going on. It's, it's impressive and we should go forward to that. But to go back to the point, the mayor, with our support, our strong support has, has put a lot of effort into this participatory budgeting and then for us to, to, to pull it back for some indeterminate period of time would not go down well, I don't think. I don't think it's a good idea. I, I, let's go forward with it. The money's there. We knew we were going to have it, spend it. It's in, it's, it's built into the contingency. Let's go.
Good.
Okay, go forward.
I get a good feeling for this. Tomorrow night, can those of you who've spoken in favor of it when you vote, can you please re-articulate those feelings so that the community at large understands precisely why this is important, why we're making this decision?
Okay.
Great, thank you. As far as I can tell, that's the end of our agenda.
Yeah, Randy, we just had a special finance committee where we had nine other resolutions that will be brought forth tomorrow night. These were all the, the budgetary transfers that passed unanimously in the special finance committee earlier this evening, which will be brought onto the floor tomorrow night. I don't know if there's any more discussion that needs to go on. They, they all passed unanimously. Budgetary transfers from 2019.
Good. So anybody who was not part of the finance committee, or I mean, who didn't sit through the finance committee meeting, any questions, concerns about those?
There's no new spending involved there. So I, I'm, I'm supporting all of them and I suspect the finance committee members will also.
Yep. I think you're right on that. Any comments there? I see Steve, then Tony?
Well, it's, it's not about that, sorry. I don't know if you want to go to somebody who has comments about this. This is a little off subject. But I, I wanted to take this opportunity to express my dissatisfaction, shall we say, that the, the merger with the DPW and Rec Department went through today. Without everybody really being on board with this. You know, I, it's, yeah, Department of Rec employees were told that on Friday, that today they would be answering to DPW. So I'm a little unhappy that this was done with, with little or no input from our council. You know, this is, I don't know. I'm just very unhappy with the situation. I'm not sure what we can do at this point. I know I've discussed it with several, several of you. I got a lot of calls from the Recreation Department employees last Friday. I've spoken to numerous people. I really didn't speak to anybody, maybe I'm cherry picking, but I didn't speak to anybody who thought this was a good idea. It's been tried to go through in the past with a lot more input from the public than this time. And previous mayors listened to what everybody had to say and backed off the situation. I really don't think it's a good idea to, to combine the two. The, the Recreation Commission is unanimously against this. It has been said in the papers that several, numerous people are on board with this, when in fact they are not. So again, just putting it out there for everybody. You know, I'm not sure what we want to do. I, if everybody feels the same, I'd like to go on record at some point to say that we are not happy with this situation.
Oh, it would be good to know exactly what, so does that mean there's no Rec Department at all anymore? Or does that mean that just the, the grounds and maintenance aspects of recreation are now under DPW?
Well, as far as I know, there, there is technically a Rec Department, but it will be under the umbrella of the Department of Public Works with Ed Norman overseeing it.
I don't, I thought that would require a charter change, but anyway, other people have comments there. Or Tony, did you have one last thing to say about?
No, I was just you know, in regard to what Doug said, it was a special finance meeting that Jeffrey might want to speak about what went on in the special laws and rules committee. And assuming they're going to come up tomorrow as well at council.
Good, okay. Jeffrey, can you do that first and then speak to the issue that Steve Rose raised?
Sure. So the two issues, we just had a special laws and rules committee meeting. This is Jeffrey Ventura Morale. And one of the items that was voted on was the appointment of some of, filling out a vacancy for the Board of Assessment Review. And this passed unanimously. And the other one was for a secret determination so that the city grants department can move forward with the construction of of each, of the green areas and parking spaces for the stadium. And that also passed unanimously. And what I was going to say regarding Steve's point, this is still on the agenda for next month's laws and rules meeting. So I don't know if at this point is a moot point to discuss it since it seems like the mayor moved forward unanimously with, with this without our input. But I think it would still be valuable for the council to have a say on it. And as, it's my understanding that now the, the Rec Department is working without a superintendent, basically. The person that was tasked with taking over the, the managing of, of the department wasn't given the title of superintendent. So I don't know if according to the charter, that's even possible or proper.
All right. Well, it sounds like we've got some work to do by that laws and rules committee.
Does the mayor have legal right to do this? Without us?
And it, what's that, Patrick?
Does the mayor, is, is the mayor's position, does he have the legal right to do this without us?
Well, that's certainly something to look into. And I think what Jeffrey's saying is we've got a perfectly natural moment to speak about this, which would be the next laws and rules committee meeting since it's still on our agenda. And that's part of the question. He can't, he can't get rid of a department that is articulated in the city charter. There was some confusion about the duties of DPW and Parks and Rec in terms of grounds maintenance and, and other forms of maintenance. But the Rec Department has pretty clear tasks and you can't just get rid of that by putting it underneath another department. As far as I understand it. Steve?
Yeah. I'm just kind of backing you. That's my understanding. The charter seems very clear to me that they should be two separate entities, each serving under a superintendent. That's my understanding of, of the charter.
Public Works serves, it has a superintendent, the Parks and Rec has a director, and the charter does state that each of those departments has to have a department head. Parks and Rec a director, DPW a superintendent.
Tony?
So now you're, we're saying that Parks and Rec doesn't have a superintendent? Jeffrey, anyone?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I haven't spoken to the mayor about this. I, I reached out to him and I haven't heard back yet. But it is my understanding that the person that was tasked with managing the Parks and Rec Department wasn't given the title of director. I don't know if that was, if, if that was in anticipation of our vote on this. So I, I really don't know, but I think it would be valuable for us to discuss it. Since it's already on the agenda for the next laws and rules meeting, I would encourage the full council to, to join that meeting so we can all have a say on this.
Does this mean, Steve, do you know that the mayor also created the new position for the environmental coordinator?
Not that I ever that's my, that was created for this merger, is what it seemed to me. I mean, I wasn't explicitly told that.
I haven't heard that that the position has been created yet.
Okay. Patrick, did you want to say something?
These new positions, are they going to cost the city more money?
Yes.
Well, let's not do it.
Rita?
Could I ask if we've received the comments or results back from the Ethics Board on the letter that was sent to them?
Kevin?
The comments that were sent to the Ethics Board specifically about what?
The creation, the, the, when we were talking about whether it was unethical when the mayor wanted to create this position? And Julian, this position?
Are you talking about the letter that we sent to the AG's office? No, we have not received a response yet.
Okay.
And are, are there, are there any other movements at the current moment, Kevin, that you know of dealing with that ethics situation? Is, is, is this letter to the governor the only, the only one out there?
The letter to the AG's office is the only, only thing that my office has been involved in.
Okay. Thank you. Patrick?
Kevin, do you know why the mayor would go ahead with this before that letter came back? Telling him whether this is ethical or not?
I don't know what you're talking about in terms of what he's gone ahead with.
Yeah, we don't know. That's part of the problem.
Because from what I, from what I remember, and I could be wrong, I thought he asked that it, with respect to that particular position, that it be pulled. So I don't, so I don't know what if any action was taken after that request he made.
So these are, we've got to do some research. Yeah, Tony?
The only thing at this type time is that what we know of is that the Parks and Rec Department now, the maintenance staff, I believe, is now, has to report to DPW supervisor. If the correct title, that is the only thing I've heard that has been new. As of today, the Parks and Rec maintenance staff has to, maybe even the parks, their director, you, the rec people have to report to someone at DPW. It's all under one thing, DPW. That is what my understanding is.
It's my understanding that the, the Rec Department hasn't been terminated. There are two still separate departments, but Ed Norman is overseeing both of them. Any more specifics, you may want to have a discussion with the mayor.
Yeah, I think that's our next step is to find out exactly what's going on and then figure out our response. All right. And Jeffrey?
Yeah, but back to Steve's point, in paper, yes, they are two, two separate departments. But that's having one person running both departments, that's the definition of a de facto merger. So it's something we really need to discuss.
Yes. All right. Well, well, clearly it's something to continue discussing and talking about and researching and trying to figure out what's going on. It would have been very nice if the mayor had let us know that this was going to happen. I'm concerned with the lack of communication. I'm also concerned about this happening, if it's happened for sure, in this moment of crisis. So we definitely have to do some talking. Anything else before we adjourn? Andrea Shaw?
Just to clarify a couple of things. First of all, just thank you all for your patience going through this. I think caucus ran a little smoother than the special meetings, so tomorrow will be even better. So just to clarify, the committee reports, they will be sent to the committee members to sign, the ones that were passed through special meetings today will be sent. Alyssa, Kyle and I will work on getting those out so you could electronically sign them. Just please be on the lookout for those because we'll need to have them tomorrow. We'll send them tomorrow and then have to get them back tomorrow in, in time for Alyssa to prepare them for our council meeting. And Rennie and Jeffrey, both of you have one committee report to type up and get to Alyssa so then she could then get out. So if you guys could do that as soon as possible, I would both appreciate it. I think we all learned a lot from this, these meetings and I'll make a couple of adjustments on things. And of course, make sure we check the website, make sure that links up. That was an issue today. And then for any of our, sorry, members of the public who are listening, if you have any comments for us, please reach out to us in written statements. You could email Alyssa Tinty, cityclerk@emtinty@kingston-ny.gov. Or you could put it in an envelope that says Common Council Comments and put it in the drop box. That's in the side, by the side door of City Hall. And do that before 10:00 AM tomorrow morning. That way it'll give Alyssa time to prepare them, get it out to the full council. So we have it all by 3:00 PM so that we could review before our 7:30 meeting that evening. And I think that's all I have. Just thank you very much, especially the chairs and Alyssa and Kyle for helping get all of this set up. That's all I have.
All right, Rita?
Thank you. See you guys tomorrow.
Yeah, just a question, but Andrea, it's all together. Good job. Nice job. Now, will this link be the same link for tomorrow or will we get a new one?
Right. You have, I already sent the link for tomorrow for the new meeting. So I could send it again to remind you all if that will help and put it on the top of your email. Yes. All right. So I'll resend that, but it is a different link. Each of our meetings will be a different link. And I will double check that on the website to make sure it is the correct link. But you do have it. I sent it three days ago. I will resend it tonight. So you have in the top of your email, email box.
Jeffrey?
Yes, I just wanted to point out because I had trouble finding it. It seems to, once you accept the meeting, it disappears from your email. So you have to go on top to the calendar on your email and there you can find it.
Yeah. Steve Shabbat?
Hi. I didn't raise my hand.
Oh, whose hand was that then? All right.
Who's that behind me?
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Get a good night's rest. Stay home and see you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.